Sounds good.
Recording in progress.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We'd like to call the April 1st, 2022 Richland County Planning Commission Work Session to Order. Staff, if you could confirm that as far as notice requirements under the Freedom of Information Act, that all of those requirements have been met for this meeting?
Yes, sir.
Hey, so this is a work session. This is a meeting that's open to the public. We will not be taking public input today. That is scheduled for April 4th, which is just Monday, three days from now. And so we look forward to hearing from the public again at that meeting. The primary purpose of this meeting is to have a conversation, questions, answers, and discussion between the commission and the staff regarding the Land Development Code and remapping. And before we get into that, I do just wanna, following down the agenda, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Okay, thank you. Do we need to call a roll for the meeting, Mr. Crooks?
I don't believe so.
Okay, alright. The gang's all here, for the record. Alright, so if we could ask the staff to provide just something of an introduction. We have obviously heard and studied this matter at length, but at the same time, we recognize that amendments to the proposed zoning map are occurring somewhat in real time by staff as they perceive public input. They are making adjustments. So if you could include in whatever brief introduction you want to offer, some information regarding changes that have happened, at least as of between the time from our last meeting to today.
Yeah, so in terms of what's occurred in the in-between since the last planning commission meeting. So staff has continued to hold meetings and staff has continued. What we mentioned previously was our reevaluation of the zoning map. For the most part, that is done. There are changes that have been published to the zoning viewer app. The zoning maps themselves have been updated. We have continued to receive other feedback since then. So over this past week from Wentz, we finished that reevaluation. So we may make a couple of more recommendations as it relates to a handful of areas. Nothing kind of significant in terms of overall area. But just a couple of others where we've gotten some additional feedback from folks since we've made our changes to that overall recommendation. So there will be a couple and we can point those out on Monday for sure, if we do make any specific changes to that recommendation. But we basically continue to take feedback, continue to hear, you know, comments we've been receiving at the meetings, phone calls, emails. So we've got, you know, we have reevaluated, weighted that recommendation. We have made some pretty significant changes across the board as it relates to that recommendation. And that is, that is available and that is what we will be presenting on Monday as well, as well as any of those additional changes that we may make from now to then.
Are the significant changes that you referenced, anything that you can summarize?
Yeah, so for the most part, it has been things related to more so maintaining equivalent districts. So thinking about level of density, level of intensity that a current zoning district has versus what was initially being recommended. So for instance, an area that was previously RSLD being recommended to R3, or a previous area that was RSMD being recommended to R4. So where they would have essentially jumped one potential level of intensity, maintaining those where they are primarily developed out for those areas. So, you know, keeping things that were RSLD, R2, RSMD, R3, things like that. That's been a pretty, one of the more significant ones, as well as some changes as it relates to the more rural areas. So in particular, Lower Richland, based on some feedback that we've been getting there, rather than having as much Homestead or AG as we previously did, looking at a lot more R1 and RT instead. So keeping at a similar intensity of what the, you know, residential capacity could be, based on some of the concerns that we had from folks in the Gadsden-Hopkins area, looking at some of things like that, particularly as it relates to the potential for subdividing for children, things like that. So that was probably one of the other bigger chains that may not be as noticeable on the map itself, but a significant portion of that was changed to reflect that specifically. Some areas to the northwest and the northeast, again, in the more rural areas. So thinking about the Spring Hill area, more HM or AG than what previously was recommended. And then around the Blythewood area, a lot more R1 versus R2, and a bit more RT there as well, based on some of the feedback that we received. But then kind of thinking about, again, across the board, more so going from what was RSLD to R3, more so maintaining an R2 at that point. The same level of density that could be allowed, slightly less, actually.
At more or less in line with the equivalency chart that was part of the adopted...
Yeah, so pretty much everything that was RSLD, you know, has a density under that zoning district, 3.63 dwelling units per acre. So the R2 would be the most equivalent in terms of setbacks, density standard at three dwelling units per acre. So the level of intensity, the overall units that could be developed would be, you know, around the same from the current code to the new code. So where we have developed areas, for the most part, keeping it at that level of intensity that it is now.
Thank you. I want to open it to the commission, obviously recognize as you, as you call my attention.
I got a question. It's a general question about the whole process. When was the whole LDC process brought to the planning commission's attention? And who called for that? Because I know that was before my term started. So I'm just curious, who brought it forward? Was it like a county council vote, or?
So the process itself began in 2017 in February of that year. So I'm not sure when specifically it was brought to the planning commission. That was also before I started with the county as well. But it would have been brought to y'all around that time as well. If anything, just letting you guys know, hey, we're starting this process. Here's what's going on. And then the assessment would have been brought before you guys in February of 2018. So the code assessment itself, so basically the big analysis, that would have been February of 2018 or March 2018, somewhere around in there. And then basically the drafts as they were completed, you know, those presentations were had, those presentations were done throughout that process.
Who institutes all that? I mean, like, is this something that county council back then said, hey, well, let's look at and let's move forward to do, or?
Yeah, so really kind of going back to 2015, right? So new comp plan, comp plan looks at, you know, all the different elements, but within that comp plan, there's several recommendations that look at, hey, we need to do something with the land development code. We need to do something with the land development code. We need to do something with the land development code. So there's several specific recommendations in order to carry those things forward. We needed to make some type of change to the land development code. And so that is basically in the comp plan itself, that's the biggest direct recommendation in terms of a policy element of what we needed to do moving forward to implement the comp plan. So that is the biggest direct thing is doing a rewrite to the land development code and due to all the changes, everything else, versus making kind of a change here, change there, change there, deletion, 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 addition over time, or kind of piecemealing it, doing it all at once as part of this. And so that approval to do it would have, based on the level of funding that was utilized, would have also had to come through county council as well.
Have another?
I have another.
Okay, Mr. Dennis.
I know we was talking about the R3, R4, and there's been a lot of public comment about the multifamilies in those areas. I was digging back through my notes and I could have sworn in my notes, we had it where it looked like R5 and R6 was multifamily, but I had wrote down R3, R4 was single family. How did that happen?
So multifamily, specifically as it's defined in the code, it's R5 and R6 for residential districts. R2, R3, and R4 would allow for duplexes, triplexes, and quadrplexes. So those are not being considered multifamily uses within the code. Also with that is because of the density requirement. If you have a lot size of a certain acreage, depending on what that density is, you wouldn't be able to establish a duplex, triplex, or quadrplex. So for instance, R2 has a density of three dwelling units per acre. So in order for you to have a duplex on a property, in order to establish that use, you'd have to have at least 0.67 acres or greater in order to even try to establish it. Still gonna have to meet setbacks, still any use standards, development standards, any of that stuff in order to establish it, but you would still have to have a certain acreage in order to have that use, in terms of a lot of existing record.
And under the old code, did that fit in the old code also, the duplex?
The way that... Duplex, triplex, and quadrplex are new uses specifically within the code. So we have a duet, which is considered a two-family, so similar to the duplex, but it's kind of slightly different. But then otherwise, the way that anyone would have had to do that would have had a, I think RM, MD, or RMHD in order to develop it, they wanted to put quadrplex or triplex on a single lot.
Quadrplex, triplex, they would have to go RM. Okay. That's all I got right now.
Mr. Gilchrist. Crooks. So we're having a public session on April 4th, is that right? To get public input about the LCD. Obviously, as commissioners, we've all gotten comments about what's been happening with LCD. We know council has been having public forums to answer citizens' questions. In the new LCD, who were the winners and losers in the new code?
What do you mean, sir?
I want to know if you think that there were winners or losers in this new code? It's not a trick question, it's just, you know.
Well, I mean, I guess, what would you consider a winner or loser?
Well, I don't know. I mean, I, obviously, we hear that the public has great interest in this. And, you know, I've heard a couple of comments about the rural nature of our communities and more specifically, and I love your perspective on exactly how, what was, you know, what was the designations in the rural communities and then what we changed it to. And so, you know, for those who live in communities that recognize and appreciate the rural nature of communities, just curious to know if anything that we've done in the code hasn't impacted that in any way.
Yeah, sure. So I mean, I think in terms of winners or losers, I think that's very subjective, for one. But in terms of thinking about that rural zoning district, right, you know, that's one of the main ones that we have throughout the county. You know, so about 80% right now is the land's map. That REU zoning district, it's one of the things that tries to do a lot, doesn't do a lot of things very successfully. So, you know, you could have, you know, 500-acre swine farm right next to it. You could have, you know, 45-unit residential subdivision with three-quarter acre lots. So you could go, you know, back to back to back to back to back on each of those things. So you've got a wide spectrum of what can occur and how that development can happen. So it, you know, it allows for very suburban development. It allows for very rural development. But it doesn't, in terms of trying to be a rural district in that point, doesn't become very successful in what it's trying to achieve, what its purpose is. So what this code then does, the new code, is basically takes those, takes that district, that RE district, transforms it into four others. So you take, say, that 500-acre swine farm, that goes into the AG agricultural district, okay? And then that, you know, three-quarter acre residential subdivision, that goes to R1. So basically taking the various components, character elements of the REU, and then breaking it up into more appropriate, context-specific districts within the code. So there's been some likes as it relates to that, there's been some concerns as it relates to that. And I think it also goes back to, in part, the context of how we're looking at. So not thinking about the rural zoning district, but actual, the rural character of our communities within Richland County. So we've got a different context in the northeast than we do in the northwest than we do in the southeast. So each one of those are really different contexts of what rural is, and they also have different wants, desires, or how, you know...
Is that different context under the new code, or is that something you were trying to fix under the old code?
Just in general.
Okay, got it.
So in terms of, say, let's say like the northwest, you know, they, they've probably been one of the areas that has been more unfavorable of the AG or HM. Because you're looking at the potential for larger lots as part of a residential development, having to have more space, more, you know, basically, so one unit under HM, one unit every three acres effectively. And so that's been something that, say, for instance, areas like Spring Hill have really been calling for for the last several years as part of the master plan, as part of things like that. Places like Blythewood, you know, they kind of like that as well, but they still want to have, you know, more of a residential character versus more so strictly agricultural. And then you've got places like Lower Richland where you've got a lot of more so family land. And so the AG and HM becomes problematic from that perspective, because then, you know, that's, that's a larger investment, that's a larger, you know, component of people's properties. Well, I want to be able to subdivide and give, you know, two or three acres to my kids. But if you've got the HM district, depending on how you're doing that subdivision, that's a potential problem in that case, because then if you're doing a minor subdivision, exempt subdivision, something like that, you're gonna have to have at least three acres as part of that subdivision. So if you've got 10 acres, you've got four kids, you're gonna have to have a zoning district that's more intense than HM. So those are some of the different kind of intricacies that we're trying to deal with in terms of our recommendation is, well, how do we have some of this work where we know we need some of these, it needs to be more so rural uses, but we also need it to not have, you know, significantly large tracts of land that you'd have to have for that. And so trying to be a little bit more specific to the different, I'm gonna say, responses of the various community areas with kind of what that feedback has been. So as I mentioned earlier, you know, based on some of the feedback in the Lower Richland area, looking at more so RT, where you get a lot more of those uses that we see in that area, but then it doesn't have as intense of a residential capacity, but it still would be about one and a half acre lots.
If I live in Blythewood, and I have a horse farm, boarding horses in Blythewood, can I still do that under the new code?
So yes, so I think this is one of the, so that's gonna be also context for that too. So are you doing that as a primary use, or are you doing that as an accessory use? So is that something that you're doing on a personal basis, where you've got a horse or two that you just have that you ride around on your property? Or is this something where you're boarding and stabling horses as part of the business?
Can I get buzzed though? Can I, can you give me an example of that?
Yeah, yeah. So as it is an incidental or accessory to your residence. So, you know, you've just got horses, and this is, this has probably been the most common one that we've been getting, you know, throughout the county. You know, whether it's a horse, whether it's goats, cows, chickens, or Godzilla. You know, if it's part of your residence and it's incidental or accessory to your residence, that's fine. It'd be the same way as a cat or dog or whatever. It'd be the same way as a cat or dog or whatever, you know, in terms of the way that zoning is gonna be looking at it, be the same way. That's why we've been, you may have been hearing the reference of, well, those are now considered pets now. Because in terms of zoning, as that, you know, that use is part of your residence, again, goat, cow, chicken, whatever. That's basically in zoning's eyes, that's, that's a pet. You know, we're not necessarily regulating that as it relates to your use as a residence. So dehec or, you know, animal control may have something to say about that, but in terms of zoning, that's not something that we do. Getting into, you know, so horses or chickens as it relates to a principal use, we do regulate poultry farms, but that's gonna be a bona fide chicken farm. Where you're basically, you're producing for Tyson kind of thing. It's not where you've got ten chickens in the backyard and then you take them to the farmer's market every once in a while for your eggs. And then riding and boarding stables, those are considered principal uses in, say, the RT, HM, AG, so those more rural districts. So those, depending on the context of it, yeah, it's just gonna be how it is. And if it's one of those things where, say, you know, you were RU, you have one of those uses as a principal use, so that riding or boarding stable that you use as a business. You know, people are coming to your property, people are boarding, people are riding, et cetera. And our intent is not necessarily to create those non-conformities, but say, for instance, it did happen. Say, you know, that went from RU to, you know, R five. You know, that's at what that point is, you just become a legal non-conformity. And one of the things that we're also gonna be recommending as it relates to the adopting ordinance for the map is we're gonna be recommending that as, you know, because there's certain provisions when the code relates to map amendments. So basically you have to have two acres or greater, but if you have less than two acres, you have to meet certain criteria. One of those is be made a non-conforming underneath this ordinance. So as part of the mapping process of this, one of the things that we're gonna be recommending is the adopting ordinance would be waiving the fee for that specific element. So if you're made a non-conformity under this ordinance, that you'd be able to come in, request a map amendment, but to have the fee waived. Still gonna have to go through planning commission, get a recommendation, get approval by council, but that's one of the things that we're.
Let me ask you a question on that. So if I'm, if I'm operating in a non-conforming use, right? Based on the new code. And I don't want to, I don't want to come in and change, get a map amendment. What happens?
So, so you're operating as a non-conformity, you want to change, so.
I don't want to change anything, I want it stable.
Right, right, so you, so you want it, you want it to be, be a conforming use at that point. So, so it'd be the same process as now. What we're recommending instead is that that fee would be waived as part, because you were made a non-conformity under this ordinance. So we're recommending that if he gets waived, basically for the first year as part of this.
Okay. At an annual requirement then for a non-conforming use to remain legal, that they apply annually?
Yeah, so, so the use, so, okay, so, so I guess, I want to make sure we're not talking about, so we're talking about, how do you, how do you make that use conforming? Or how do you continue your non-conformity?
Right, that's what I was asking, how do you continue the non-conformity?
So you continue that use.
Okay, and there is no fee associated with that?
Right.
Okay.
Right, I mean, you're still gonna have to. So if you're still, you know, operating that as a business, you're continuing to continue that use, however, however you demonstrate that. There's no fee associated with that. I mean, you're still, you might have to have a business license, pay, pay property taxes, et cetera. So, I mean, you're gonna have those things that's gonna be associated with that, but in terms of us, no, you're not gonna have. So I was in reference to, if you're trying to do a map amendment to bring it into conformity. For whatever reason, you know, that use isn't allowed in that district anymore, so you want to be in a district that then allows that as a, to bring it as a, as a conforming use at that point. But in terms of being made a legal non-conformity, you just continue the use.
How much of that are we gonna have across the county? I mean, are we gonna have a lot of non-conforming use that's, that's been made that way because of the code?
There could be, so our intent is to, as much as possible, bring things into conformity versus creating non-conformities. The ones that we have made as part of this recommendation have been very targeted.
As some proactive zoning.
Have been more so related to things like the commercial districts.
That would require some proactive zoning, is that right?
The MU, yeah, the MU two and MU three, basically where do we apply those districts? And that's probably one of the most common ones as it relates to things like, say, the rural district. There may be some that occur, but the way that we have been looking at that, those have typically would be recommended for RT, HM or AG due to the uses. And those that are principally would be, you know, a residential district or residential use rather, so just, it's just a residence on property. You know, it's a residence on property. You just have a larger tract from what that intensity could potentially, you know, have as it relates to a minimum at that point.
Thank you so much for that, that clarity on that. Mr. Chairman, if I have one more question.
Sure, sure, I was, I was gonna follow up on the same topic, but if you're still, still on the same topic.
No, go ahead, go ahead, I can wait.
Okay, so, uh, so you have a list of potential properties that will become non-conforming uses?
Not necessarily, no. So we don't have a list of what all could or couldn't be. It's basically gonna be, you know, what were you doing before, what was your use, how was that? And then how did the code change as it relates to what you're doing?
You indicated earlier that targeted.
So it'd be more so as it relates to, because we know the differences between, say, the MU two and MU three district, what those standards are versus just the general commercial district. Where the general commercial district doesn't have things like design informed standards, doesn't have, so it has setbacks versus a build two line, doesn't have, you know, you have to build within a certain percentage within this build two zone. Doesn't have those types of standards. So those may inherently create non-conformities because of what that district tries to achieve and where it's applied. So that's, so I mean, we have a, we have a good idea of where some of those are, but we don't have a specific list of what they are. Does that make sense?
Have a list. But what? A district?
Yeah, yeah, we'd have that.
So, that to us, as it relates to this conversation, inherent changes that may inherently lead to non-conforming uses?
Uh, yeah, I mean, we can, we can provide that. So you, are you just wanting just specifically, anything that's going from, say, GCD MU two or anything that, that is not going to a district that is not the same that it is, I guess is, is the question.
No, just the, the first.
Okay.
Yeah, the more limited it's got. Sorry, Mr. Gilchrist.
Oh, you fine, Mr. Chairman? Nope, you're fine. This is my, my final question on this subject. So walk me through the process of approval for map amendments and zoning. Once the new code is enacted. So, so does someone still go to the pre-planning meeting? Then they come before the planning commission, then they go before county council?
It would be the same process as it is now. The only difference would be if planning commission and then county council make some changes relates to that pre-application meeting. That would be the only difference potentially, but the way that that language is listed now is, it'd be the same process as currently.
Oh, someone can't just have a piece of property and it's just rezoned and the planning commission or the county, the council not be engaged in that, is that right? Is that right?
Say that again, Mr. Chair.
So, I'm not the chair.
Sorry, 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 Mr. Gilchrist, sorry.
Don't put that title back on me. I guess what I was asking is. The, does the, the plant, does the staff and the, and the council all still have a role in any rezoning that takes place in the county?
Yeah, yeah, it'd be the same process as what it is, council would still be the one that approves or denies a map amendment. Planning commission would still review and make a recommendation, staff would still review and make a recommendation, but it's still county council to approve or deny that map amendment.
I know that's a lot of conversation out there about that's not the case, right?
Well, so I, I think it's in part, it related to, you know, what is council looking at now? So council is still doing a map amendment, they're just rather than looking at this individual property on an individual basis, looking at an area and looking at all the properties as it relates to that area. Versus just one at a time. So council is still gonna be the one approving or denying a map amendment, approving what that zoning should be or shouldn't be. So that process is still the same. Council is not losing any ability of approval or denial for map amendments.
Or the planning commission.
Or the planning, yeah, yeah, planning commission will still be the recommending body as it relates to this. Yeah.
I have a, for this moment.
Mr. Taylor.
A question for the staff. I know one of the concerns I also heard at one of the, the meetings was. And I guess the question would be, is there, I don't know if there's a maintenance plan moving forward. I know one of the concerns was that the information that was gathered is obsolete at this point was what was stated. So I don't know if the map amendments themselves or the requests is a type of maintenance, but I, I know that was a concern. Will that concern be addressed, the fact that, I think you were saying what the, back in twenty seventeen was when this was initiated, the assessment was done. That they're saying at this point, I know the concern from the, from the public is that the, the data that's being used to make the changes is now obsolete. Will that be addressed or that concern be addressed?
Okay, so you're saying in reference to basically the data that used to inform the plan itself. So, so we, so I know, I guess this was back in, was it twenty twenty, twenty nineteen at one point? And then we brought some information back to the planning commission about, you know, how some of those, some of those statistics have been changing, some of those things like that. As it relates to the evaluation of the comp plan. So we, you know, that, some of that data is in the process of being gathered, updated, and so we will be looking to make changes to the comp plan as, as an update. So more so data-specific things and then also changes to the future land use, future land use map itself. So we're really waiting to finish this before doing that.
Right.
And in part using this to inform some of those changes as well. But in terms of the data, you know, the data that's in there, yes, but also the data that's, that's there is not necessarily any different. In terms of the, basically the trends and things of that nature. So the way that, you know, areas have been growing, still within the last five years, there's just still been the areas that have been growing. Areas that have been losing population, those have still been the areas that have been losing population. So, you know, where we're seeing development, where we're not seeing development, where we're seeing growth, where we're not seeing growth, those have still, those trends have still been the same. So in terms of the, the data that's in the plan, not necessarily being the most up to date. Sure, but it's still the, the way that that data has continued to play out is still, you know, on, on trend with what that was showing.
And maybe that's just something good to state, because again, I know that's a concern.
Right, and that, and that would be one of those things that we would be looking at as part of a more specific update to the plan. And then also within, I guess, next three years at this point, we're also gonna be looking to doing a, you know, full update to the plan also. So one of the things that we're looking at in the interim would be doing future land use map updates. I'm not sure if we've, we've mentioned this to, to you all yet, but basically adding another layer to the future land use map. I know we've talked to the council about it because they, they had a motion through one of their committees as it related to some of that. But that would be one of the things that we'd be looking at is basically adding an additional layer to the future land use map in the interim. And then obviously going and looking at the full plan update for twenty twenty-five as well. But we're looking at, we were looking to try to get this done more specifically before we really started hitting, hitting that really hard, but we are looking at certain things as it relates to that.
Thank you.
If I may, it's just a quick follow-up to that. I think one thing that's important to think of is with that code assessment, with those recommendations based off of the current land development code. That text has not significantly changed since that assessment was done. There have been some minor text amendments, but it, it hasn't significantly changed, so those recommendations are still valid and, and based off of our current land development code.
And, and so Tommy's referencing the, the code assessment itself, so what informed the draft, looking at the comp plan, the current code, all that stuff. And then help build into the draft of the text itself. So what are the things, what are the new things to look at, what are the old things to take away, stuff like that?
Oh, I got just one other question if I may.
Yes, Mr. Gilchrist.
I remember when we first started this. We, we talked about that one of the interests was to make sure that we're, we're creating an environment in the county where we could see more economic development activity. And the code being a, one of the tools in the tool bag in order to be able to do that. Do you, do you feel like we've, we've, we've kind of, we've, we've, we've done something to try to help with that in, in the current code, the, the new code?
So as it specifically relates to economic development? Uh, I think in some ways, yes, so.
And let me, let me kind of further expand what I mean by economic development. So I mean, so industrial development, manufacturing development, those kinds of opportunities within the county. Do you think we've been able to, to, to create an environment where that might be possible? Because obviously, we all know that we, we have a very healthy and robust housing development market here. Some folk would argue that it could be even more robust than what it is. But I, you know, one of the motivations behind some of this was to try to create a balance when it comes to what we experience on the tax side and, and, and the opportunity to be in a competitive environment to attract business. So I'm just curious to know if, if, if you think we, you know, what we've been able to put together thus far has in some way helped with that scenario?
Yeah, so I, I think, I think the code, so, so the text itself, you know, it, it's got a new zoning district, specifically the employment district. So that is particularly kind of a, a hybrid industrial, commercial district. So similar to kind of how the M one functions, but it's also a lot different. So it's not gonna be as commercial oriented, it's gonna be more so in, in employment. So more specifically looking at manufacturing, processing, those types of uses. So, so in some, so in some cases, it's, it's a kind of an amalgam of things related to, say, the heavy industrial. But it doesn't have the noxious uses that you would typically expect of that. So you're not gonna be able to find things like scrap yards, things that are gonna be, you know, producing fumes, things like that. So you could have heavier processing potentially, but you could also have things related to, okay, well, as part of our overall site development that we're trying to do, well, we also want to be able to provide workforce housing with it. So we have the ability to, through the Board of Zoning Appeals, apply for a special exception for apartments or townhomes. So we could co-locate, you know, our workforce, our factory and retail, a little, so basically more sort of service retail, all as part of that employment district.
So, so it's kind of on thirty thousand foot level, if, if, you know, high tech is a big, is a big thing right now. And if the county wanted to pursue some major high-tech initiative or employment deal. Does our code in some way give at least some comfort to a potential prospect that that's indeed? I mean, does, does our code help support that, something, something like that?
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think it would help business development in that capacity. Whether that's gonna be through the employment district, whether that's another one. So, you know, we've also got specifically now the planned development employment campus. So if we had, say, someone who wanted to come in, do a larger site development, you know, it's kind of, kind of a larger contiguous tract, they could come in and do it as this PDD. Instead of, you know, just doing it as a, as a regular PDD, but hey, we want to be specific to employment. So we come in, still have this mixture of uses through the PD, is it PD E C, I think is the abbreviation for it. So that, that planned development employment campus, come in, have this larger, you know.
What if I don't want to do employment, what if I don't want to do?
You still, you know, you could still look at the employment district itself or variations of the other zoning districts that we have as a base level. And so there's a lot of features within there, new uses that we don't have currently within our code that allow for some of that refinements to existing uses. So there's a variety of different things that would help support some of those functions. So, yeah, I think, I think the bigger question then is, is where do those get mapped as well?
Right, yeah.
And then I think in some cases, we're looking at things related to, again, that future land use map as it relates to the economic development corridors and center. You know, where do we put some of those employment uses? But then again, it also comes back to later on, as we need some of those, you know, do we do that proactive remapping as part of the county? Or do we just, you know, wait for someone to come in and say, hey, you know, you got the zoning that I want, there's some land right here that, that will work for me. You know, and then just they come in and request that rezoning as part of, you know, whenever they're trying to do that later on as well. So, I mean, there's, there's, there's some of those, there's issues and some of those battles again, because it's also, well, how does the community respond to it? How does the community not respond to it as well? But in terms of, you know, do we have that capacity now, I think, I think we do.
Who, who, who are the designations in the new code that can proactively rezone property?
So, so who could like initiate a map amendment request? Yeah, so, so the code allows for a map amendment request to be initiated through four ways. One is through county council directly via motion, the other is via the planning commission via motion, and the other is, can be initiated by a staff. So definitely the county administrator and the planning director. The fourth way is through directly via a property owner, which is the most common way that that occurs.
And if that occurs, the process is still the same where if the county administrator?
So the only, the only difference would be that through those ways, because typically you're, you're doing a larger area at that point. You wouldn't necessarily have to post the properties themselves. Depending on the overall size, we still probably would, depending on. Depending on the overall size, we still probably would, uh, depending on how many, but say, things like this, if you're doing thousands and thousands of properties, you're typically not going to post those. You still have to advertise and do all that, but you're not going to have to necessarily post. But say we did a, you know, a handful along a road kind of thing, we'd probably still at that point go through and post them, so.
Mr. Price, you had a comment?
Yes, um, and this is a little bit off topic here, um, but, um, I'm not sure if y'all, if, if any of your previous meetings, that we've had the opportunity to introduce you to our Assistant County Administrator Eric Jensen. He's, he is part of, of his role within the Richland County. He is over the CPND department, which includes our planning and zoning. He's here right now, just like give him a moment to just address the planning commission.
Oh Chris, is that okay? We pause from?
Oh, sure, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Mr. Price. Mr. Jensen, was it? All right, welcome.
Mr. Jensen?
Could you pause for just a moment?
Hold on one second.
That's what we're going to work on.
It is. If you know, if you painted it red, it would be more obvious.
No, I'm just kidding. Again, so, uh, Assistant County Administrator Eric Jensen, for the record. Just wanted to very briefly give you a couple of words of advice and, because I've done this, uh, five, six times for different jurisdictions, um, in my career. The most recent was for the City of Reno, Nevada. That's where I came before the county, uh, found me. Took us five years to go through this process from the start of the comprehensive plan until the code was updated and adopted. So, yes, your process has been a little bit longer, but for a jurisdiction, a community of this size, it's not unusual. Again, I was hired in 2016 by the City of Reno. They had just started their master plan, comprehensive plan update. It was the first time they had done a com- a, a comprehensive update of that in almost 20 years. Took us two, two years and change to finish that process, that master plan process. Again, this is a community of 250,000. And then it took another two and a half years after that to update the code to reflect what had been adopted in that two and a half year comprehensive plan process. And we had a significant consultant helping us, um, through that whole process to the tune of north of $500,000. So understand that even with professional help of a national firm, it takes a long time to wade through all these issues. So, when you hear the folks, when you get the phone calls, when you wake up at four in the morning, we appreciate that. We understand that, that it just takes a lot of time because you're dealing with people's lives and their property. For a lot of people, their home is their single largest investment. So they're going to be sensitive about those things from an economic standpoint, but also they're going to be sensitive from a personal standpoint. Because it's their families, it's the place they go home where they rest their head at night. So this is normal. It's painful, but that's why we have public transparent processes. Is so that everybody can get their say and they can weigh in on a process that affects them personally. So I just wanted to share that with you. You have a great team, you have a great planning team, I'm happy to be here working with them. I don't get to spend as much time with them or with you as I'd like. This is what I've done most of my professional career as both a planner and as a developer. I've worked in the public sector, I've worked in the private sector. I've been a contractor, I still dip my toes in the water every so often doing projects. I, I literally started in the private sector doing development that the, uh, developers weren't doing. Literally urban style mixed use development back before that was popular and before, you know, the banks found a way to finance that. You had to be very creative. And so my father's an attorney and a real estate broker in Los Angeles and he had clients. And I would use their funds on these projects that the banks wouldn't fund. So I did a lot of cutting edge things in small communities in Utah. So that's my personal passion. My passion is for communities, it's for people. And if I can do anything to help you at any time, you know, just contact me. But really you have a great staff here. They're good people, they work hard, they're dedicated to this, and you can rely on them to, to give you good information. Part of the question or part of the challenge though is asking the right questions. Because if you don't ask the right questions, you're not going to get the right information. And so, and I'm hearing some good questions today. I think one of the things that you're not asking, that maybe you should, is not who are the winners and losers? Because as, um, I can't remember if it was Mr. Crooks or if it was Mr. Price said, that's completely subjective. You know, increasing the density in some area may really make some people happy. People who want to have an accessory apartment or who want to, you know, subdivide some of their property and give it to their children. But their next door neighbor might say, hey, you know what? I don't want my neighbor to subdivide their five acres. I want them to keep it as five acre because I don't want more houses next to me. And yet that same person, that person right next door is saying, no, I have two children and I want to give them each an acre to build a house next to me. And so, it is not winners and losers. It's what is changing and it's how is it changing and are the people involved and are they getting their say on the issues? So, thank you so much, I really appreciate your time. I apologize, I have to step out to another meeting now, but I, I appreciate your service and you're great people, so thank you very much.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Jensen.
I would just like to, thank you, Mr. County Administrator, Assistant County Administrator, for sharing those comments. You and I have something similar, uh, we both were administrators of counties. And so I'm delighted that you're here in Richland County and thank you for also referencing my comment. My hope was that Mr. Crooks would have responded and said the taxpayers are the winners. Because that is who we are trying to serve. And I think that council, I think would, would agree with that. That, um, that is exactly the, 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 the whole imp- impetus for why we're doing what we do. So, uh, thank you so much for being here, Mr. Chairman, thank you for allowing me to come in.
Absolutely. I can't imagine, imagine a bigger change in the continental US than going from Reno to Columbia, South Carolina. So, uh, Godspeed in your transition from one place to another. We don't even agree on how we say the state name, Nevada.
Nevada.
There you go.
No, 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 it's not, it's really Nevada. I get, I just wanted to play it, you know, it's really Nevada, if you're a local, it's Nevada.
I don't know if I can trust anything you say anymore. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, sir.
Chairman?
Yes.
I want to piggyback on. Oh Chris, on his?
Let me hang tight and just make sure Mr. Gilchrist doesn't have anything else right now.
I can't even remember what else I was talking about. Jensen just threw me all off. But, um, I don't know what I was talking about really.
Okay, we got time. Mr. Dennis?
Your question kind of goes along with mine. You know, I was looking through here and I was seeing how the commercial zoning, um, how are we looking forward on that compared to the residential? And you kind of answered a couple of those questions. But how does this affect the upzoning in areas? How does this affect some of the areas that these potential companies could come in? Does it hurt us in some areas or should we kind of sit back a little bit and wait on the private sector and entice them to come in?
So in reference to commercial development, so specifically commercial uses, industrial uses, things like that?
How we're looking towards the areas of residential upzoning as we go out versus some of the areas that we could potentially bring in some industry? I mean, I mean, it could be a Chevrolet plan or BMW or something else.
I think from our current recommendation, the, the amount of upzoning that we'd be recommending from a residential perspective is significantly decreased. So we still are looking at a, a limited amount. But that has been significantly decreased, um, from the previous recommendation. But where those upzonings would occur, I think it's, it would be more so areas where it's either been in the process of growing, been in the process of developing. Or is, you know, an area that is, I'm going to say, ripe for that to occur? Because you're kind of, or some of those other areas, it's where you're starting to get the things that, that growth could finally happen. So whether that is interest from, say, you know, from a school perspective, interest as it relates to infrastructure, those type of things that would then support that development where there hasn't been historically in the past. And so a lot of that also coincides too, where there's also a, I'm going to say a fresher market for some commercial development. Because if, you know, typically we, you know, typically commercial is going to follow residential. And so that's one of the things where, you know, where there hasn't been this, I'm going to say synergy of, you know, residential capacity for that. Well, okay, well, if we do get some of this, where we have some areas that are being upzoned, well, that allows for the potential to increase some of that commercial aspect as well. But then also depending on where it is, because the way that some of those areas are set up, say, let's take some of the north central for instance. So that Wilson Boulevard, Fairfield, kind of, you know, south of Blythe Wood, west of 77. A lot of that's, you know, in terms of a access perspective, you know, there's fairly large roads, large capacity as it relates to them. So you're also looking at an area that has the ability to support commercial, industrial or residential uses for the most part. So, you know, those would be one of those areas that you could see, you know, the benefit from that upzoning, where we have been seeing more interest for housing, more interest, but also more interest for some commercial as well. Because that interest in residential has been occurring. And so those are one of those where you're looking at it from a variety of different perspectives. Where you could have that industrial come in for the, the larger, you know, economic development project or things of that nature. As well as, you know, now having the residential to support it. And then the, the other, other commercial aspects that also go along with that too. So I think, um, you know, it's basically just, it's really just going to be where is that going to be? And, and is there already going to be some of that framework to support that commercial as well? So in other areas, you know, maybe not so much some of the industrial components, um, but maybe some of the more so smaller scale commercial. So still, you know, things that would be more so general commercial, but, you know, not just going to be, you know, an intersection here or there as say neighborhood mixed use or something like that. So, is that answer?
Like the other part of it, um, how you explain that? How have we worked with other parts of government, like, like the schools and things like that? And so if we got these maps and we're trying to project areas and trying to project growth, how can we ensure that our infrastructure is going to support this sort of stuff?
So, so we can come up with that from a, from a couple of different angles. So, so I'll start with, so comp plan, for instance, okay? So comp plan has the future land use map. Future land use map is basically here's this 20 year, you know, time horizon for where and how we should be growing. So looking at that, you know, that's what we have typically shared with the school districts when they've been doing their pre-planning. So I think, uh, Richlex Five started doing it, I think, two years ago when they did it. And then I think, you know, School District Two did it recently as well with some of their stuff. And I know School District One's been paying attention to it a lot more recently because of the housing developments that have been occurring around Lower Richland. So I think they've been starting to pay attention to that a little bit more. But, you know, in terms of what we're recommending and typically what we reference as it relates to that future land use map typically coincide with one another. So any future growth, future development that would be occurring under the new zoning would not necessarily be anything different from what that future like, future land use map would be recommending otherwise. So in terms of levels of intensity, levels of development, types of development that could be occurring would still coincide with that. And so you're also looking at things, so from a traffic perspective, the COG, um, so they serve as the NPO. They look at development as it's regularly occurring. So they, on an annual basis, they look at, you know, building permits, things like that, and they project out populations for the future. That's also what is then tied to, um, funding, uh, transportation improvements as part of that. So, you know, we meet with them on a regular basis, they're looking at it on a, on a regular basis as well. So, you know, also part of that is, you know, we have a fragmented system as it relates to utilities, services, things like that. You know, we've got the school boards, we've got three different school boards, each one of those is their own decision-making body. So, you know, same way with DOT, DOT owns probably, you know, at least 70% of the roads in the county. And most of those are going to be our major, major roads and thoroughfares. So, you know, DOT is going to have the final say on things like that, School District is going to have final things, final say on things related to, you know, when and where and how to build schools. So all we can do is, you know, share this information with those other bodies, those other decision-makers, and we do. You know, we make sure that they're informed about what's going on. If they, they have questions, we provide them answers. If they're doing their own planning processes, we're typically involved with them and we share what information we have, what we can. So in terms of, you know, how all of that occurs and, and how we're looking at some of those things, you know, we, we do that on a regular basis. There's also the component from the development itself. So, you know, we, we typically think about, you know, the land development code. We don't think about that the land development code is basically made up of three parts. You've got the zoning, you've got the development, and then you've got the subdivision. So each one of those are their own specific standards. And so, you know, the zoning is, all right, what are those uses? What's the intensity of those uses? The development standards are, okay, well, how does that actually occur? What is actually done as part of the development itself? And the subdivision, obviously, here, how do you subdivide land? So as it relates to those development standards, that's where you have things related to traffic impact, environmental impacts. Those types of things are reviewed and, um, addressed during the actual development process itself. Because then as we know, okay, well, there's wetlands here, there's a stream here, you know, there, this type of development because of what the use is, what the level of intensity that use is, because of how it's actually being developed. We know, okay, it's going to have this level of impact on this section of the road. So we can say, okay, well, all right, we, if it's a county road or DOT, if it's a DOT road, has the ability to say, okay, we're going to add in a signal here, we're going to add in a new turn lane, we're going to add in a center turn lane and a side access lane. So have the ability to address those impacts on the overall system. But things like, you know, again, school, that's going to still be up for the school board to decide how they do that. Same way with, with DOT. So, you know, that fragmented system is a bit of a hurdle at times, but it's one of those things where, you know, everybody plays together. You know, we're not necessarily shut off in a corner, you know, doing everything just all by ourselves. Everybody's interacting with one another as everybody's having these conversations, um, so.
What I was trying to get at is, you know, if we're looking forward to the future, are we ahead or behind these other parts of government? And are they ever going to catch up to help us out? Because I would hate to waste people's tax, or not people's, let's just say what it is, let's hate to waste taxpayers' money. If we can't, if we move forward with things, but we can't get it.
Well, I think that's also, I mean, that's a good question, but I think it's also, how do we want to view that too? So, so let's say, you know, I mean, a lot of this is also chicken and egg. You know, what, what do we say comes first? All right, well, we know it's a growing area, we know there's going to be this demand. And so, okay, well, let's go ahead and build out the infrastructure. But then let's say for whatever reason, some other component doesn't occur. Well, what happens then? You know, let's just say, all right, let's look at Lower Richland, for instance. You know, that's why all of that development is coming along, online now, is because we have the sewer and water infrastructure down there. Where previously, you know, 20 years ago, that didn't exist, but that's when all those approvals occurred. So when we had those rezonings, when we, you know, when those ideas were played out, okay, we had that, but then what happens if, you know, infrastructure never came then? Does that development then, you know, do they go a different direction? So, you know, we could say, all right, well, let's widen every road that we're expecting development to, you know, 17 lanes. But then what happens when we spend, you know, a billion dollars to do that? But then, okay, X, Y, or Z thing happens. And then that development that we were expecting doesn't occur. Because you're also going to have to pay for things in a certain way, whether that's going to be typically through a bond, but you're going to have to pay that bond back as well. So thinking about it from a fiscal's perspective, yeah, but you also have to be careful in terms of that. Because you don't want to overbuild to then have the lower demand than what you're expecting. So you kind of want to time it on a more so even basis where you have some of that. And that's typically what happens with, with most of the infrastructure that we see.
Thank you, because I, I really, I'm not a bond type guy. Taxes come in, I say, we got to make do with what we pay then. I don't want to do something that would cause bonds to be voted on to try to do what we're looking to do in the future. Or not do in the future. Just trying to look out for the people.
Are there, are there instances in the proposed zoning map that include reassigning something that was previously maybe, uh, non-commercial or non-industrial manufacturing to industrial?
For sure. Or say like employment, light industrial, heavy industrial? Some employment, I think, and that would be more so in areas where, as it relates to the future land use map or the way that other development around it has been occurring, whether, say, you've got a gap between, you know, three or four properties that, okay, this is an industrial, this is a commercial, what do these become, become in between? You know, there's been things like that, but on a, on a whole scale basis, not necessarily changing something from, say, residential to industrial. There's probably been more instances where we've changed something from industrial or commercial to residential based on, you know, how that area's been growing, how that area's been developing. how that area's been developing. But there, so I'm not gonna say no outright, but certain cases, yes.
What kind of sets of lists or information do you have that can help us look at some of these targeted changes that are occurring?
Could you elaborate that, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, I mean, just kind of the request that I just, for information I just made, would you have a list of parcels or some sort of a map that we could look at that would show went from non-commercial industrial manufacturing to?
Yeah, I mean, we can create that. I mean, we've, I mean, the, basically, I mean, we're using a giant database, essentially. You know, is where, is where all the information is stored. So, I mean, we can, you know, query that, hey, you know, we wanna see everything that was heavy industrial, light industrial, what all that previously was zoned to that, how much of that went to a residential district? How much of that went to a, you know, similar zoning district? How much of that stayed the same, kinda thing? You know, so we could look at everything that's HI, how much of everything that was HI? You know, what, what was downzoned from that? You know, we can see, you know, some of those percentages or things like that, and we could provide that list. But I think it also just goes back to, you know, we'd have to make that list first. But, I mean, we have all that data in the database that we could, we could essentially query on, you know, what it is that we wanted to find.
Okay, that'd be great.
So, so basically, what all was industrial? So what was HI or LI that then gets downzoned? Or what was residential that then gets upzoned to industrial?
Probably more so the upzoning piece. And, and again, just to be clear, we're, we're talking about increasing intensity of use or density of development. And, and to state the obvious, it's, this is a ton of information, you know, thousands of properties in unincorporated Richland County that are being touched by this rezoning plan. And as many hours as I know we've all spent on it, it's still, it's still a lot. And so, you know, hence that request for some assistance in ordering things up. And, and of course, anytime you're looking at upzoning, people really perk up just because it's a change from the status quo. So, I appreciate you sharing that information with us. What percentage, if you kinda had to guess, or whatever you wanna say, is to the landmass that's the subject of this zoning map, would you say is experiencing upzoning?
How much, like what percentage?
Let, let's just presume that the equivalency map in the code does not constitute upzoning, that, that an equivalent transition is not upzoning. Outside of that, how much would you say is upzoning?
Somewhere between probably 10 and 20%. And most of that would be related to residential. Other 10% would probably be going from a rural district to something else. Probably R2 at that point, for the most part. And that'd probably be roughly maybe seven and a half to 10. Just off the top of my head. So, yeah, I'd say roughly 10 to 20% gets more so upzoned. Probably half of that would be residential, half of that commercial or industrial.
At 10, 20%, half commercial, half residential? Okay.
Yeah, and then just opposite that, 65% of the county gets at least downzoned. So majority of that goes to RT, HM, AG from the current RU.
Speaking back on what Mr. Dennis was referring to early regarding the schools, just to help me understand this a little bit better. So the schools in their bailiwick can just decide that they want to zone a certain piece of property for a school and that's it?
No, so they would still have to go through the approval process for that.
Often have we turned schools down for zoning?
Well, yeah, I mean, schools are pretty much allowed in most zoning districts, anyway. That's the same way with most institutional uses. I think there's a handful of districts that they aren't.
So the new code in no way changed that?
Not necessarily. I don't sure where the, where all they would have been previously. There may be a certain nuances that relates to that, so, let's see here, institutional.
Is that typical? Schools can just?
I mean, and for the most part, I mean, unless you're gonna have something that's highly specific or highly exclusionary, then yeah. Because it's one of those things where, you know, do you just want schools on major thoroughfares? Or do you want, you know, say, neighborhood schools of old where they're gonna be tucked into a community potentially and, you know, things like that? You know, so, you know, it's one of those things where it's also, you know, if you look at the permissions, most of it's by special requirements. So there will be certain requirements that they're gonna have to meet in order for that to be established. I think, let's see, for ours, you're typically looking at a minimum size, where you could have recreation spaces and how the access for the school is, is done on, in certain zoning districts. So as it relates to that, you will have certain, certain restrictions for it, but they're still allowed kind of across the board for the most part.
Do we determine, we determine this, uh, uh, density capacity for schools? Is that what you're saying?
No, so, so the schools, so the schools as an institutional use, so the, so the density requirement wouldn't apply to them.
It would apply, okay.
So, but, but, but in this, we're saying that in order for the school to, to be built, so in order to establish a school at that location, you have to have at least two acres. So if you're building a school from scratch, you'd have to have at least two acres for elementary, middle, or high school. And then recreation spaces basically have to be behind the school, can't be in the front or something. And I think primary access has to be from a, let's see, let's just look at it, scroll back up. I think it's Collector, yeah, Collector Thoroughfare Red Line. So primary access has to be from one of those two types of red lines.
Thanks, sir. Y'all are gonna have the public weigh-in again, right, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, on April 4th, and I wanna make sure we cover that in that next steps item on the agenda.
Okay.
So, staff, it'd be okay if we just send you an email request with the rest of the commission included for any sets of information we might ask from you? Okay.
Just, I guess, I, I would ask that if there's additional information that y'all need, cuz I'm, I'm gonna go make this today. Otherwise, it's, probably wouldn't be getting until Monday morning or shortly before the meeting, so.
Yeah. I think, Ms. Fireson?
I'm sorry, I, I do have a concern. I remember at the last meeting, in fact, you and I talked about this at the end, when I did the prayer and I mentioned something about freedom for the people of Ukraine or something of that nature. Excuse me. A gentleman went to the microphone and he, I think, really was sincere. He thought that we, I mean, were taking away the freedom of the citizens of Richland County. I didn't take it personally, it's just that unfortunately, sometimes when we have, like, reports from the, you know, staff people, some of the people in the public really do think that we've already made a decision. And I know that when Mr. Gilchrist was chair, he tried to make it clear and he read the statement at the beginning. And I know that you, as chair, will try to make it clear. But it, it concerns me that we've really got to make it clear to the public that we are, you know, an advisory board and that we really are listening to them and we're trying to be fair. Because I know, say, I mean, I live in the county, too, of course. If people think that we're some lord high executioners and we don't care what they're saying and we're not even listening, it would make them angry. So please, let's always do our best. If we hear people getting the wrong impression that we're not listening or that we've already made up our minds, let's try to politely correct them because I know that, at least I think that man was sincere. He really did think I was trying to snatch away freedom and that's the last thing I would do to anybody, you know? So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, thank you very much. It, it's true, it's, uh, it, it can be a tricky situation, especially for protracted matters such as this. And it's, it's protracted for good reason, it's important. And it deserves review by the public, by the commission, by council. And being an advisory body and, and also being a quasi-judicial body, you know, we're, we're a little different from elected officials. And so it's, it is tricky, sometimes feeling like we're holding our tongues to the appropriate, you know, moment in the process. And I, I hope you all agree, as I would, that it's been nice to have this work session today so that we can, you know, voice some things that, that we wanted to share based on our own review and based on the public input and, and that this being the appointed time for us to be able to share that. We look forward to continuing to hear public input again on April 4th for any and all that might wanna be here. You are also welcome to submit anything, anything in writing that you might like to, to the Planning Commission. You're welcome to do that before the meeting on Monday.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Gil.
I just wanted, if we could get from staff, any other dates of any public meetings, any dates that would warrant us to have to make, for example, when this is going before council, when there's a planning commission, how to take this up? Do we, do we have kind of a calendar of any of this stuff?
Yeah, sure, I mean, so, you know, Monday, the 4th would be, you know, coming before you guys. And so, you know, that's when, you know, y'all have the ability to make a recommendation. We've also, our, we've advertised for the 26th. So that's the zoning public hearing that we would have for this, but, I mean.
County Council, zoning public hearing.
Yeah, so the zoning public hearing. But I think there's also the potential that, say, you wanted to talk to us more directly?
No, as we've pretty much stated, it'd be, I guess, direct. After the 26th is when we'll have a better schedule. Because until we see what council decides that there's only a public hearing, we really can't give you any ideas of when the next meeting will occur or what's gonna be required of staff.
Will we have to vote this out on the 4th, 4th is on the public hearing?
Okay. You are, it's on your schedules, you're scheduled on the 4th to take action on the mapping. You could, and it's for recommendations, so you could recommend approval. You could recommend approval with certain, you know, other recommendations about before your approval. You could recommend denial of this.
That's the same day we're getting public input?
Yes. You also, you also could defer it. You could defer it until either another meeting, you could establish a special called meeting, or you could just defer until, let's say, the May meeting, May meeting. But understand that 30 days after an item appears before the planning commission, that county council could then pull it from the planning commission after that period. But that wouldn't be until after your May meeting if you took the position that you wanted to defer it. So you do have some options before you. But again, I would also make a request is, you know, not just with the planning commission, it's also with council, that any actions, especially for, you know, deferrals, just using that, is that you be kind of specific as to what it is you're looking to accomplish due to, with your motion for deferral and what it is you may need staff to address prior to the next meeting.
Firm again, that zoning public hearing that's currently scheduled for the 26th in front of county council, there will be public input?
Yes.
Counsel, and, and, not to be happy I said it, but they're, they're elected officials, so they're available now. You know, if you wanna reach out to them, county council is there to be heard from on this matter. It will be before them sooner or later. Okay, any other questions about next steps? I guess we covered additional discussion? No, no, no other next steps conversation? Yes, Mr. Crooks?
As it relates to that point, so I know I mentioned earlier, you know, we, we're gonna be going back through, looking at some additional properties that we've gotten some questions about and some of those areas related to that, those properties. So we'll probably have a couple of question, a couple of specific changes that we'll look to make again with the recommendation. So we'll probably do that today and have those, they'll be uploaded as it relates to the viewer for Monday's meeting. But we can note those when we get to that. Also wanted to note that, you know, based on some of the feedback that we've been receiving, we're also gonna be looking at text changes as well. And so those likely wouldn't come before you all until the May meeting, anyway. But we're gonna be looking at a variety of text changes as it relates to certain items. So things related to clarifying language, so things related to definitions, as well as things related to certain use permissions or certain development standards as well, based on things that have been brought to our attention or as we're thinking about this in a little bit less of a theoretical perspective. But, you know, someone did come in, someone did submit, or, you know, how would this actually play out? You know, we're, we're seeing some of those nuances a little bit more, things that we need to tweak. So we're gonna be looking at certain items as it relates to some of the feedback that we've been getting. So we will be bringing those back to you all. So things that we're gonna need to address immediately, we'll likely bring back before y'all in May. And then things that, you know, probably wanna see how they play out a little bit more, probably wait a couple months as it relates to some of those things. But things that we know we need to go ahead and do now, we're gonna be bringing back to you all, probably, probably your May meeting.
And also just make sure I'm clear on this, that as part of your recommendation on the 4th, you could tie certain text amendments to your recommendations?
Those text amendments, that would be to the LDC itself?
Yes.
Okay.
So, so say, for instance, things related to duplexes, triplexes, and quadrplexes, where those may or may not be allowed, or things related to the quote-unquote "character." So, you know, if that means something related to a design reform standard with how those work, or the overall use permission themselves, or something related to the neighborhood compatibility standard. So we're looking at a couple of different things as it relates to, you know, some of that feedback that we've been hearing. We haven't necessarily, you know, made any type of, you know, final recommendation of what way we may go with it or not. And so we're still having some discussion internally about that. But we're gonna be bringing back certain things based on, you know, different items, concerns, things like that, that we've been, we've been hearing, so.
Very much. I'll go ahead and just ask now, again, if you could provide a list of properties being upzoned on the new map, you know, not including what we stipulated about the equivalency chart in the LDC, stuff that would be upzoned outside of that?
So, so is that everything that's being upzoned? Or just upzone as it relates from a, to, cuz originally, I think it was just the industrial type of property. So this is anything that's being upzoned?
Yeah, if you're saying it's about 10 to 20% of the county, I'd appreciate if that's just something that you could sort and provide.
Alright, so everything, alright, so basically everything that's been upzoned?
Yeah, yeah. And we recognize that there's not perfect equivalency from the old code districts to the new code districts.
But basically, everything that's not gonna be, so not, not the R2s or RSLDs considering that a downzone? Okay, alright, but not, and not considering, you know, going from R5 to, or going from R, you know, RSMD to R5, that would, we would be considering that an upzone then?
Yes, thank you, so.
Just wanna make sure.
Else, anybody else wanna request anything right now from staff? Alright, thank you all for the discussion. Mr. Crooks, a lot of heavy lifting in your explanations today and to the rest of the staff, we do appreciate you guys and what you're. Nothing further, real entertainment.
Here, I got. Is there a way that we can get a printed copy of the table from this LDC? I've tried to print it at home and it's not working correctly. I didn't know.
Land use table, principal use table?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, we can, yeah, if y'all wanna stick around, we can print some of those out.
Alright. Motion to adjourn?
Alright, thank you, moved and probably seconded.
Actually, if, if y'all can, if y'all would just stay here for a few minutes, we can give you this little package that we kinda created.
Okay.
Which would include the matrix.
Okay.
If you just give us a couple of minutes, we can get that to you.
Alright. Meanwhile, would the staff take a vote on the motion to adjourn? Meanwhile, would the staff take a vote on the motion to adjourn?
Motion for adjournment, those in favor? Yonki?
Aye.
Fireson?
Hey, I'm just joking, aye.
Metz?
Bradham?
Aye.
Brady?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Gilchrist?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
We're adjourned.